Meeting, regular meeting, November 12th, 2020. Will the clerk please conduct roll call?
Amy O'Brien.
Here.
Lynn Lockwood.
Here.
Spiros Tomatoes.
Yep.
Mike Favreau. And Mary Collins.
Here.
We have a quorum and call the meeting to order.
I, Erin McMullin, board clerk, have confirmed with counsel that this meeting is being held in compliance with Executive Order 202.1 issued by Governor Andrew M. Cuomo on March 12th, 2020. The executive order suspends Article 7 of the Public Officers Law to the extent necessary to permit any public body to meet and take any action authorized by law without permitting in public, in-person access to meetings and authorizing such meetings to be held remotely by conference call or similar service. This meeting is being held remotely via Zoom virtual meeting software. The public has the ability to view or listen to this meeting live via the Zoom app, web browser, and/or by telephone. This meeting is being recorded and will be transcribed at a later date.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. 1.3, public comment.
Public wishing to speak to the Board of Education will be allowed this period of time to do so under the following guidelines. Speakers will be limited to a maximum of three minutes and the entire public comment session to a maximum of 30 minutes. Speakers are requested to state their name when called on, their address, I'm sorry, you don't have to, your address and a topic. Speakers will not be allowed to personally attack any board member, administrator, or any of the public present. Also, no comments by the speakers will be permitted that deal with executive session subjects such as individual personnel matters, discipline issues pertaining to specific individuals, including students. And speakers will not be allowed to read letters. We ask that you raise your hand using the raise your hand button and we'll call on you in order. If you want to speak more than once, we're going to go through everybody one time before we allow you to speak again. So, so far, there are no hands up.
Okay. That concludes public comments. We have no one wishing to speak. 2.1 Superintendent Report.
Thank you, Amy. I'm actually going to go out of order because I'd like my teachers to go first and that way they can get the rest of their night off. So I know Joel's on, Erin Molesky's on, and Catherine Kaczynski, the elementary principal's on. So let's do the primary project presentation first so they can go and enjoy their evening.
Sounds good.
All right. Hi, so I am Joel Pelz. I'm a school psychologist at CFE. And what I'm going to do now is I'll just share my screen so you can see the PowerPoint that we put together for you. So, as I said, I work at the elementary school. I have been there now for seven years and I am the supervisor for Primary Project. And I will let Erin introduce herself.
Hi, I'm Erin Molesky and I'm a teaching assistant at Schenango Forks Elementary. And this is my third year as a child associate for Primary Project.
And then Catherine Kaczynski, who's our administrator, and she oversees the entire project.
Hi, good evening. Thank you to the Board of Education and Dr. Peck for the opportunity to present this evening and welcome to our virtual audience. As Joel so kindly said, my name's Catherine Kaczynski, Principal of CFE, and I do oversee the Primary Project. This is my fifth year at CFE.
All right, so I'll just talk a little bit about what Primary Project does before we jump into the unitty gritty of it. So it is a preventative program that's research-based and it was actually started in 1957. So this is a program that has been around for 63 years now and 2,000 schools nationwide participate in this program. It really helps to identify students with mild school adjustment issues and provide them with one-on-one time with a specially trained and supervised peer professional, which is Erin. Catherine, did you have a couple of things did you want to say?
Yes. As Joel said about Primary Project, it does address the children's school adjustment difficulties and increases their chance for success through play. Schenango Forks Elementary was approved for the Primary Project grant in spring 2017 through a sustainability grant. So for the first year, we received $15,000. Second year, $11,250. And then this year, our third year, $7,500. We applied for the, another grant this year for $750 and we received additional money. And this is really thanks to both Joel Pelz and Erin Molesky for filling out all of the grant application. This year, we will plan on attaining our national accreditation, COVID-dependent, of course, and will be scored by a group of experts in 44 different indicators. And then, without further ado, we will continue with our presentation.
Perfect. Thank you. The other great thing is we hope you enjoy all these photos because they are of our own students. We thought that was going to be really important and we got all parental consent, of course. So please enjoy them because they're full of love and joy and lots of play. So what is Primary Project? Again, it's a school-based early intervention, helping children with mild school adjustment issues. And there's really six core components of this. The first is a focus on young children. So the program can go anywhere from pre-K to third grade, but we have chosen to focus on just kindergarten, the second half of kindergarten, and first graders to give them time to adjust to school. The second component is early screening and appropriate selection of children. So that seems to be really important as we move forward in terms of choosing the kids and making sure that we are selecting the right kids because not all kids are appropriate for this program. And we use the TCRS, which is a teacher rating scale given to us and provided to us by Primary Project that helps us choose kids based on their selected items. Three would be the use of peer professionals in a direct service role, and that's what Erin does. She is our child associate, so she is really in there doing the work with the kids in the sessions. She has gone through lots of training and professional development to continue to hone these skills over the past three years. Number four is the use of a mental health professional as a supervisor. So that's really what I do here. We have weekly meetings. They're really supposed to be one hour, but we end up doing a lot more than just that one hour on Fridays. We really talk almost on a daily basis about kids or what we need to do to help improve the program. Number five is use of ongoing outcome and process evaluation. So this really helps us maintain the integrity of the program and help us understand the impact on kids. And then lastly, number six is integration of the program into all fabrics of the community and the school, which is partially why we're talking to you in the community and the Board of, we really want everyone to know the joy and the excitement that we get from Primary Project and also the outcomes that these kids are sharing with us and what the teachers are also seeing in the classrooms, too. So this year, we had the opportunity to think about what it was going to look like. Do we want to do virtual or did we want to actually do our typical in the playroom? And so we decided on a virtual format this year because we didn't want to have a interruption, excuse me, in services in case of a possible closure. So, and then for the germs and the health of everyone involved. So that was really what had driven that idea, but we're hoping in the future to go back to the playroom. And instead of being in the playroom, we decided to put together playboxes, which included a multitude of different items, imaginative items and expressive play items. And Erin and I were able to drop those off to the homes of the children that were selected. So who's involved? There's lots of people that are involved, so it's a team approach. But most importantly, it's definitely the kid. The kid is the center of everything as it is a child-led play approach. And then also the parents. We are continually being on the phone and communicating with parents to let them know how things are progressing in the playroom. But again, I'm a part of this as the mental health professional and I'm responsible for overseeing the day-to-day project activities. Principal, of course, is really important and really the ongoing, the ongoing project and really helping us to make sure that we're keeping in the fidelity of the program. The child associate is so important and I will let Erin speak a little bit about her role. And I just want to give her the biggest shout out because she was selected just based on the fact that she has been able to build for many years trusting relationships with kids and that's at the absolute core component of this. And I have been so lucky to be able to work with her and I'll let her share a little bit about what she does.
Okay, so I'm going to talk about my role as the child associate. First and foremost, my job is to build a trusting relationship with the children. I also attend conferences that are related to Primary Project as well as professional development trainings. I manage screenings and assessment measures under Joel's supervision. And I document each meeting. So once a week, as Joel mentioned, we, we meet to discuss the student's progress and there are additional and quantitative scales that are completed throughout the intervention. And some other things that I do are I schedule play sessions and conferences with caregivers and I communicate with the teachers and staff members. And Joel and I, we provide student updates as necessary, always keeping confidentiality in mind. And lastly, I'm responsible for setting up a playroom that is safe, functional, and one that allows for creative and imaginary play.
And then, so thank you. That's exactly what she does and she so eloquently said that. And then the last piece, of course, are teachers. Teachers are so integral to this process and being able to help us choose the right kids. And in the beginning, when we're choosing all the kids, all of the teachers fill out the rating scale on all of their students. And Catherine was so wonderful in being able to help provide teachers with substitutes just in case because we wanted to make sure all the teachers had the appropriate amount of time to spend on this rating scale. So we got the really good informative data. So they were made available just in case teachers needed them. Some teachers took advantage of it, which was really great to see. So they, again, are a really important part of this process, especially as we move forward with selection. So the student selection process, I love this photo, by the way, is all the kids are systematically screened, like I had mentioned, through the TCRS as a pre-measure. And there's four different areas that we look at in terms of being able to choose what children are involved. We really look at task orientation, behavior control, assertiveness, and peer social skills. Those are the four big areas that we look at. And once we start to kind of rule it down that we want kids that are, you know, maybe showing some, some concerns, but not at highest level because those children are going to need different interventions than what Primary Project does. Then we start to have teacher meetings and we start to go through these kids, you know, and say, who's going to be the best? And we start to choose kids that might be more anxious, shy, moody, they might have difficulty engaging in positive peer relationships. This intervention really isn't for the kids who demonstrate physical aggression or cognitive problems or, you know, receiving other, other interventions, behavioral or psychological. So it's really for those, the mild adjustment issues. And then if we need to, also do observations to kind of help choose where we go next with the students. And then, once that happens, the teachers get involved again and they are the first line of communication when it comes to creating that, or they're the first ones to kind of explain Primary Project to the, to the parents. And once we kind of get the feel that the parents want the kids to be involved, that's when Erin and I take the next steps, working on consent and really getting the kids into the program. So what happens during the intervention? Let Erin talk about this.
Okay. So, once a child has been selected and we've been given consent, the student is paired with me, a specially trained child associate. We meet once a week for 12 to 15 sessions. And during that time, I focus on building a trusting relationship. This is done by using a child-led philosophy. And that pretty much means that, that the child directs the play. The child is in charge. So when I first meet with a child, I let them know that this is their special time. And, you know, they get to choose what they would like to do during their time. And they have a wide assortment of imaginative and expressive items to choose from. So for 30 to 40 minutes, the child has my undivided attention. And I make nonjudgmental comments and I don't ask questions. And by making the direct comments about what they're doing, it lets them know that they have my full attention. So I'll just give you a couple of examples of, you know, some statements that I might make. You're really working hard on that. I see that you, I see that you chose to use a lot of colors in that drawing. You're curious about what that is, but in here, it can be whatever you want it to be. You really want me to open that for you, but that is something that you get to try for yourself. And so basically, so at the end of the intervention, students receive a certificate of completion and they join all of the stu-, well, I split them up into groups, but the students join me for lunch and for ice cream in the playroom. And we celebrate the end of our time together. And it's so fun to see these kids come together because they, they talk, they show each other, you know, the toys that they love to play with the most and it's, and it's really, it's special.
So we'll jump in and we'll talk about a little bit of data here. So we have data from our 2018, 2019 school year here. So the blue was when the teachers, the blue bar graph you see is when the teachers had taken the pre-test on all the kids and had rated their different behaviors. So task orientation, behavior control, assertiveness, and peer social skills, you all see, are on there. And so we had a lot of growth in all of these, with the exception of behavior control, which kind of told us we had to work in that area a little bit. And maybe we weren't necessarily choosing the right students or the most applicable students because it is a bit of a learning curve for us in, in terms of this. So overall, again, we saw some growth and pretty decent growth, but what we really ended up seeing were the most significant and positive impacts last year, 2018, 2019. And so here you'll end up seeing that in task orientation, it jumped seven and a half points overall for all the kids that were involved. Behavior control jumped 18 points, which that's really what we want to see. We want to see kids being able to regulate their behavior in the classroom and really take on that self-awareness piece. Assertiveness, we saw a 20, almost a 25-point jump there. So that tells me that we're choosing the kids that are a bit more anxious, nervous, that they aren't really asserting themselves and getting their needs and wants met. So we were able to see that big growth and that jump there. And then lastly was the peer social skills and that was about a 16-point jump. So we started to think a little bit about, why did we see these jumps? And we can't necessarily, we can't make definitive decisions and thoughts about this, but we started to think, maybe we're starting to choose more appropriate children for the program. The CA, so Erin had really honed her skills and started and really was practicing them and she kind of got the hang of it a little bit more, too. So she, because it is really art and a craft to be able to learn how to speak with, like that and interact with kids. And then lastly, there was an improvement in the rating scale. So it went from 32 questions to 16 questions and I think the teachers found that probably a bit more manageable, too. So we were able to get feedback as well from parents and teachers. So I know Erin and I picked out a couple of these in terms of what we want to share with you. So I'll let Erin go ahead.
Okay. So my child was so excited to go to Primary Project. She loved it. Plus, she came a long way with her confidence in talking to people in public settings. And I love this one. My child seemed excited to participate and always shared the fun he had during his individual time. Mrs. Molesky is passionate about how helping, about helping the kids and gave great feedback about my child's progress. I love that the school's focus is not just on making strides academically, but also socially and improving confidence. Please continue to offer this program. And then, just a couple of teacher comments. I saw positive social changes in my students, especially one who now always wants to share in class. Thank you for helping my students grow in confidence. And my student is socializing more at lunch with her classmates since she has started the program.
Excellent. All right. And then lastly, what are the kids saying? So I had the chance to bring the kids back into the playroom for just a couple, couple minutes and they had some really great comments, but I think the most important thing to note was their excitement going back in and the smiles on their faces when they went back. And some of them were just like bouncing in their seat trying to talk to me, which is super cute. So some of what they said was, I used to play in here every day. I used to play with blocks. Mrs. Molesky was really nice. She made me feel good. I liked painting in the Barbie house, so they shared a lot of their favorite memories. I had fun in here and I got to play fake baseball. I was excited to play. I loved it all and my favorite. She, Mrs. Molesky, would talk about stuff I would really like. She made me feel happy. So I loved that one because the child was able to internalize and understand that that time was truly for them. So thank you so much for listening and learning about Primary Project and what we do at the elementary school. So if you have questions, you can always feel free to ask.
Excellent presentation. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Guys, thank you very much. Ladies, thank you very much. Go enjoy your night and I'll see everyone tomorrow. Appreciate it.
Bye.
So every month, we'll be showcasing a different school and a different program. Next month, we're going to have Steve Tronavich from the high school and what he's doing at the high school. So that's going to be a weekly, I'm sorry, a monthly board feature on regular board meetings, not special board meetings, regular board meetings. Every month, we will have a presentation from a school building. So Primary Project, thank you very much for kicking us off on that tonight. Next up, do I still have, I got two Bill Christestons, but I know one is not Bill Christman. One is Aaron Leach. Aaron, how are you doing?
Good, Dr. Peck, how are you?
Good, good. Bill, are you still on? Did we lose Bill?
Yeah, no, I'm here. I'm here, Dr. Peck.
Okay, so Bill and Erin are from Tamco. We are looking for a new project manager. We are severing ties with Construction Associates, who did Phase 1 of our project, and I would like to bring Tampa on board. Tampa is a local company down on Front Street and I've asked Bill and Erin to come tonight, present to the board, to give me the okay to go ahead and enter negotiations with them. Aaron Leach has been around for a long time. He was on our last capital project under Ry Ordin and he is now working for Tamco. So he's very familiar with the district, very familiar with all the employees, with, with maintenance, custodial, everyone he would have to work with. And I believe he's familiar with SCI, too, because he's just had a big part with Phase 1 and the roofing, correct?
Correct, yes.
And so, go ahead.
Successful project.
Yep. So our construction manager we would get would be Erin and like I said, he was on Phase 1 of the project, just on a different side of the scale. And then on our last capital project, where we did the STEAM Academy, Erin was there for the whole thing as well. So having said that, Bill, if you'd like to take over, give your presentation?
Sure, thank you. Should see my screen, correct? Move it so I can see it. Everyone see the screen? You can see it, correct? Yep. All right, well, thank you, Dr. Peck and, and members of the board. We really appreciate the opportunity to talk to you tonight. As Dr. Peck mentioned, we are very much a local firm that is a small, local firm that is very much invested in our community. And basically, my role here tonight is really just give you an outline of our, our company, what we do and kind of what we stand for and how we can support you. So Dr. Peck introduced Aaron Leach, who would be our project manager, is very familiar with the Schenango Forks School District, has worked in several different capacities, including this summer, supporting the district in their construction. And then also myself, my, my, a little bit of my background is, if the name is familiar, I was a school superintendent in the area for the past 10 years. About a year and a half ago, I, I joined the Tamco team. I was in the Sydney School District, very familiar with Schenango Forks. My family's all Schenango Forks. I was the Windsor side of it, so please don't hold that against me. Back when Windsor actually beat Schenango Forks once in a while in football. So that was kind of my background, but my entire family is rooted in Schenango Forks and, and so is our company and, and we're very excited for this opportunity. Our background, our, our company is 100% locally owned company, woman-owned company. Members of your district, as we mentioned before, their, their children attend your district, the Smith family. Tammy Smith is our owner, hence the name Tammy's Company. We are the management side. We pretty much are a full-service, family-centered construction manager firm. The idea behind this and how we put this together a few years ago was really trying to address some of the challenges that not just superintendents faced, but school districts were facing in school construction. I felt from living it every day as, as Dr. Peck does and as you do as school boards, that there was just something missing and that we could do a better job really servicing the district's needs and, and putting our children first in our communities. And so that's what we did. We kind of put this together. We went out and hired what we feel are the absolute best people in this field that understand not just construction and not just, not just schools, but how to blend them together. We took a very deliberate approach to staying small. We are not a company that will have 15 and 20 different clients. We intentionally stay small. The idea behind that is, is our approach is, is very time-consuming. We're very visible in your district. We like to get, be part of the district. We like to enjoy watching children succeed. We like to be part of the programs that are going on, attend events, things like that. As I mentioned, we, we basically went out very skilled, focused on hiring skilled customer service-driven people that can serve the districts. We believe what you believe, meaning that our children are certainly the most powerful and going to be the most powerful people within our communities. It's part of our job to not just provide great opportunities for them, but also we feel the facilities is a huge piece of the puzzle and that we can do so much, we can do so much more by improving our facilities and therefore providing programs and improving their experiences. Again, as we mentioned before, we, we truly believe the fact that our schools are the focus of our communities and we believe that what we can do is we can support you in, in building that same shared vision. As we mentioned, we are right down on Front Street. That is where our home office is. We travel around a little bit in the area, but our primary focus is, is in the Broom County, Tioga County, a little bit in Delaware County. And last year, we had a little bit of work down in Susquehanna, just over the border into Pennsylvania. But our primary focus is right in our region. We are not a statewide company. We don't have multiple offices. We don't have a B-team and a C-team. We bring the team to every single client. That's really what our goal is and it's how we built everything. We really value our relationships and our students over our clients, meaning the idea is that we feel as we, as we grow as a team together with you, with your architect, in this case, SCI, that we have a great working relationship with. We strengthen that relationship and kids win at the end of the day. That's the real, that's the real goal here. So the project team, as, as we mentioned before, Erin Leach would be a project manager, would handle all of the nuts and bolts of day-to-day operations. Myself, I, I can, I support pretty much the financial side of it. We make sure our budgets, anything that we have to deal with, SCD as far as approvals, I get involved with that, try to take some of the load off from the district when they have to do that, help with budgeting, things like that. Erin's would be your primary contact. He would be the one in charge. He'd be the one on site. He'd be the one making sure that the drawings are filed the way they're supposed to be. But more importantly, before any of that happens, he's the one that has him and the rest of our team going through those drawings, making sure they're buildable, making sure that they're in budget. A lot of, a lot of responsibility falls back on that project manager and that's why, although his name says right now, my name, truthfully, we feel like we have one of the best in the business that can do this plenty of experience and has a proven track record of success. We also have Liz Leach in our office, who is a civil engineer. So if we have site work that needs to be reviewed, is also a project manager on another, on two other districts that we're working with. And we also have resources that, from estimation, we provide estimation services. We usually outsource that, third-party type estimates, and then we provide a lot of procurement support. Third party type estimates, and then we provide a lot of procurement support. So there's a lot of different things that we do. It's important when you look at a project team like this, that we understand that we are a full service construction manager. We are not a clerk of the works. By any means, our role and a lot of times that gets confused on what the differences. Time, we could certainly talk about it, but one of the biggest differences is, is the presence on site and the partnership that really occurs with the architect. The district, we're an equal partner in that process to make sure your project goes across and comes across the right way. So our current workload, just to give you an idea of what we're working on right now. This past summer, we had a good sized site work project out in Green that will move into phase two next summer. That is a series of kitchens and some renovations. We also are out in the Wego Appalachian where we had a large job this past summer. You see some pictures of it in the backs in Tarso, where they put their logo on the floor, which turned out just absolutely beautiful. And then also some site work out there. Next summer, they have another 14 million that will be managing out there as well. So again, we, we're kind of on each end of the two counties surrounding there, but we're excited with our, or excited to be partners with both Wego and Green as well. On site, as we've mentioned before, we will basically look at, look at this as a project manager being Aaron Leach. All of our onsite supervision will work through him. As the project, you have a sizable project that you're, you're moving into. As we start to come on board, build the team, we will start to add where we need to add. We'll work with you and make sure that when we get into full construction, we have a good, not just supervision, but we have the right players on the bus if, if you want to look at it that way. If we need some additional engineering support, we go out and get that. If we need additional estimating, we do that. It's, it's all basically what the, what that district needs at that particular time. That's the flexibility we really bring to the, really bring to the table. Why Tamco? You know, basically, as I mentioned before, we are a full service construction manager. We provide a comprehensive district approach. And the way I, I look at that is, is what I was looking for in construction managers is what we try to bring and what our company believes. Is the best approach, which is that idea that we know you, we work with you, we report to you, we, we give you reports. We don't just watch construction. I think that's the important part to understand is that in the, in this case, in the pre-construction phase, we're looking at opportunities to not just save money, but in some cases provide better products and products. And so we really collaborate with the architect in the district. We're not a hands off approach to, well, those are the drawings and now we're just responsible for building with them. We like to be part of this right from the beginning. We cherish that relationship and we know that at the end of the day, that provides the best project. We support the SED process. The SED process is a moving target. We all know that it changes. They have a lot of turnover often at, at state ed. And so sometimes we run into some late challenges with that, but we have experience up there. I'd like to say all my experiences with them is wonderful and great, but we've all done our battles at times up there. But we do have an extensive knowledge of the process and how to get, how to work with it, sometimes how to work through it. Unfortunately, sometimes how to work around it. But you know, you know, know that you have a partner on your side that's been there and done that and can bring some experiences to the table. Certainly not all the answers, but certainly has some strategies with it. An area that we focus on too is our procurement plan. A, a project in the way you procure it can lead to how successful that project is as well. So we like to make sure that we're developing not just the hard bid type of project. We look at different cooperative contracts, state contracts. National contracts that are out there. What's the best way for the, to bring the best product to the district? We look at price obviously as a factor, but we also realize that sometimes the absolute lowest price on bid day is not the absolute best price at the end of the project. And so we understand how to work through those relationships and look for different opportunities for that. And then we do complete document reviews. So that's something sometimes construction managers do not do. In our case, we find it to be critically important. And honestly, it's, it's a little bit of bragging in our part that our, our staff are able to do that. They are, they are not just general contractors that now supervise jobs or cite people who just who supervise jobs. They are very comprehensive in their knowledge. And so they know all of the trades. They understand the plumbing and the HVAC. And what we don't know or what we're not experts in, or what we feel we can, we can review, then we get, we get help doing that. Multiple estimates, that's a critical piece of it. And then of course, more on my end really is with this is cash flow and making sure we collaborate with your bond. Support staff, there are a lot of opportunities in financing, especially right now with the way the market is with rates as low as it ever been to sometimes generate some additional funds for your project through the way you bond it and the way you ban it. All right. Most importantly, of course, is we want to make sure that programming and the design is meeting your goals. We don't want any surprises. You don't want any surprises. None of us do. Same thing here. And when it comes to construction, this is where the rubber really hits the road. Luckily, that's not me managing that stuff. I, I can look at it from an educational standpoint. This is where Aaron really takes over and there'll be multiple trades, obviously onsite from, you know, all four to five to probably different prime contracts. We'll work directly with the architect on RFIs or when they need additional information. And this entire process is managed through one point of contact. We are not a company that switches things around where one person's here one week and another person another week. You'll have your point of contact onsite. And then of course, if there's other questions, whether it's around finances or something where we have to provide additional support, that's where I come in. And there's other people in our office as well that we can bring, bring to the party, so to say, when, when we need that support. And just quickly in closing here, your success is really our success. We see that a successful project is not one that's just in budget or just beautiful in nature, but is one that actually improves. Improves the learning environment for our students. We have walked the walk before. Myself have done it from both the school side and the construction side. Aaron has obviously done it from the construction side and has had a tremendous amount of success. So we're very, very confident that we would be, would be excellent partners. And then of course, you're, you're very important to us. We, we look at our partnerships as something that is long term. We don't go out and submit on 10 or 20 different RFPs all year long, chasing work all over the state. That's not what we do. We look to work with a district, build a relationship with the district and then stay with the district. And we truly believe our, our local approach and the fact that the majority, if not a large number of our employees live right in Broom County or right around Broom County, that they understand your schools too. Your, your school is important to them as well. And they're going to, they're going to do their absolute best to provide you with the, with the best possible project. And so I know I went really fast and hit a lot of different things. But I, I definitely wanted to give you time if there's any questions or if there's any else you want us to elaborate on. This is really intended to be just an introduction to our company and how we're centered right in your backyard. But most importantly, we're fully capable of, of working through your project with you as a partner.
Does the school board have any questions for Bill or Tamco? Well, Bill is taking a bill or or Aaron? Okay, do you have the authority then to go ahead and negotiate our interdened contracts with Tamco to go ahead to be the CM for the phase two?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I don't know.
Yes.
All right, all right. That, that's, that's not a resolution. That's just an informal vote. Be on, you know, contract negotiation and we'll bring all back to, back to you guys for that. So, all right, awesome. Very good. Bill and Aaron, I appreciate it. Give me, I'll reach out to you. We'll set up a meeting via Zoom and we'll start talking contracts. Okay?
Awesome. Great. Thank you, Dr. Peck. Thank you, members of the board. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks guys. Have a good night. Okay, moving on, I got three real quick things about, and Amy, help me out here a little while. How long ago did you bring the, the the cost savings reduction to us where they looked at our budget? And if they could find any savings, they.
Probably a year, maybe longer.
Yeah. So we've been working on this at least a year, if not longer. And we've put a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of district resources in. And we did come up with a cost savings of $112 a month. And that was a utility cost that we're being billed wrong on. So we're going to make up the 112 a month divided by two is what? $56? Did I do math right? So we, we did yield a $56 district savings monthly. So then again, that was Mrs. O'Brien. So I don't know if you want to say anything, Amy, or not about that.
Was that a utility bill?
What it was, is the way I read it, AT&amp;T was, was charging us incorrectly and it should have been Verizon. So Verizon picked it up. 18 tiers charges should have been Verizon. Verizon picked it up, which was cheaper than AT&amp;T. So that, that's how we got the savings to the 112. But we had to split it 50 50 with the company that found the savings. So that's how we got the 50, what they just say for $6 a month savings.
So, so they do the work for nothing. They could find something. They could find nothing. They go through all the utilities, the fine tooth comb, and they look to see if we're being overcharged anywhere. And this is what they found. So it's not much, but it's something that we were overpaying. And so it's something that will continue on per month.
All right. Question for the board, question FI kind of combination. We gotta look at graduation for June 2020. I can't tell you with COVID what that's even going to resemble. But again, we gotta start getting it on the books. So right now we're looking at June 25th at 6:00 PM, multiple ceremonies, maybe, maybe not. Again, no idea what it's going to look like. That's up to our governor and our new president. Our rain date of June 26th at 10:00 AM. And again, I'm, you know, just can graduation be held indoors in case of rain? No clue, absolutely no clue. I mean, I'm trying to look at seven months out. Literally, I'm trying to go day by day at this point. So the board does need to be aware of this. And if we get June 25th at least on the calendar. And, and again, you know, I, I know Lynn, you and I spoke by text a little bit this week. It's literally a day by day school operation right now, seeing what's going on with COVID and the governor and, and shutting things down. So I know no one's really thinking about June, but is June 25th, does anyone see any issues with that for a tentative graduation?
No.
26 is a rain date. All right. We will get that. I will talk to Dan Palmer tomorrow, let him know that, that we're good with that and we'll go from there.
The only comment I have regarding that is if we were at the stadium again, I, based on what that layout looked like last time that we divided up into three sections. I don't see why we can't do it all at once if we end up at the stadium again.
You couldn't do it all at once because you were to violate the governor's mandate of not having more than 100 people in one setting, no matter what the size was.
Plus we have the turf this year. I mean, we couldn't, we did it at the stadium. Yeah, we didn't have our stadium. That's why we, we didn't have our stadium. So we had these guys.
Right.
Right. I was just, I was just going to say, we won't have to go to Nice Egg. We should be able to do it at our place now.
Scratch that. That is exciting. I forgot all about that.
And Amy, I don't disagree. We had that, that thing was 120th filled.
Yeah.
Idiots. But we were, we were following the governor. So I guess. All right, let's move on before I make clinical comments, which I don't want to do. So OSHA training in the auditorium. Nick Aldrich, if you know Nick Aldrich, he works for us in the district. He came to me and asked if he could do OSHA training for the fire departments. Hillcrest, Schenango Fork, Schenango Bridge Fire Department, two times in our auditorium. I said with COVID, I gotta ask the board, because right now we've locked down to everything external. But this is the fire department, Schenango Bridge, Schenango Forks and, and Hillcrest. So before I said no, I wanted the board to weigh in on it.
Where are they gonna be in the auditorium?
It would be the high school auditorium.
When will it be? Is, is it, it's not going to be during school hours?
No, it'd be after school hours. It's two trainings, Nick said. So I, I forget what months they are, but I can have the after each one, obviously.
Would we have to do like extra sanitation or something after? I mean, what, what would have to be done?
I'm sure I could get Nick's pride to do the extra sanitation since he already works for us. I don't, I don't see as incurring a cost for it.
Speaking for myself, if we don't have a cost to the district, I don't see a problem with it. It's not going to be done when the kids are there and there's extra sanitation after. My opinion, I think it's fine.
It's a community service. So we can do it. Let's do it.
Agreed.
Let Lynn, you, fire department, you got any love for the fire department?
No.
Okay, we're good for it, Joe.
All right. Again, I, I agree with what Mary said and Searle just said. I mean, this is the fire department. If we tell them no, I mean, these guys got to train. And, and people in the community may need them. And I don't want to be the reason why they're not OSHA trained.
Right.
I think it's a good move, guys. And that is it for me. Thank you very much.
Joe, I want, I have a question about the electricity thing. So they're getting like, are they going to review our stuff next year too? And see if they find anything else that's going wrong or?
I believe we'd have to re-contract with them to do that.
Okay. And then yeah, so we're saving $56 a month this year. And then next year, we're saving the full $112. Cause we probably would have still been being charged wrong for it.
Amy, how's your work? Was it over the life of the?
I don't, I honestly do not remember. I've read every word of it, but that was over a year ago. I do not remember the fine print of that.
It's three.
What's that?
It's three years.
True.
Okay.
Before we do this again, when you do these kinds of things, you don't usually do them every year because they don't usually find, you know, you kind of have to have a few years in between. And something that needs to be factored in. I mean, obviously we were hoping for some huge savings. Something is better than nothing, but you also got to figure out, I mean, I'm sure there was Schenango Forks man hours or person hours, sorry. You know, so you need to factor that in. You know, out, out of, you know, how much did that savings actually cost us and that kind of thing? This is, would you do these? I mean, which is fine. You don't do them all the time. I mean, I, I don't know. Maybe every three years, every five years, but you're not going to find stuff every year. It just doesn't work that way.
And maybe Searle says that's why it's a three year commitment, maybe because of that reason. I tell you what, they had to dig hard. I mean, we have so many audits and so many checks and balances. I mean, I can't. I mean, to find anything is amazing. So they, they had to dig hard to find that.
Well, I think that speaks to our systems in place. So this is good.
Yeah, we, we are very run and I'll take my hat off to CBO and Mark Petrino for helping me do that. But we are tight.
Excellent. Any other questions? Okay, 2.2 board report. I'm not sure who submitted these student workload.
That was me. I, I just wanted to, and you know, obviously Mike has a kid in the high school and Amy, you have a kid in high school too. So, and again, it's anecdotal. I'm just seeing, well, first off, I want to just say that I think all our teachers are absolutely raising, you know, rising to all the demands. It's, it's just incredible the work they're doing. But, and, and I'm, I think some of our students are too. I'm sure there's always a few that, you know, don't put in the same amount of effort, but my concern is and I'm seeing this with my kid and talking to some other parents, some of the workload and I, I don't know if all the teachers realize some of the workload. And I just, you know, wanted to just put this out there. I, I don't know if they realize how many hours these kids are putting in. Because it's brutal. And I don't know if it's for everybody. I, I know it's not every teacher, but, and I know some of the classes are very demanding. But at the same time, I just, just wanted to remind everybody that, you know, this is brutal on everyone. And, and some of the workload is just, you know, and I, I don't know, you know, Mike or Amy, if you guys see the same thing, or is this just something that I'm seeing?
I made the assumption that it was, that's just, it is what it is, you know, Evan's taking all college courses. So I just looked at it as, you know what? I guess this is what it is. But yeah, it's, it's a lot.
It's a lot for the teachers too. And I, I think a lot of times being put in on both sides. So I commend the teachers and I commend the students and the parents being able to work through this.
It truly is a team effort. It, it really is, you know, between the three, the parents, the teachers, the students.
I think it depends on the kids too. I, I have two children in the high school. One just does their work and gets it all done. One, I have to constantly look at Schoology, remind him, them about assignments. They don't even know that they had an assignment, you know, it's just the kid. You know? Which is why I would like to see them back in school four days a week because I'm, I won't have to do that as much.
The, the only problem Lynn, it, it, I think it's going to get worse before it gets better. So I did forward the board this week, the, the latest zone changes. That snapshot I sent to you guys yesterday, I think everyone got it.
Yes.
And that's something that the superintendents get daily. And that's something that the superintendents get daily, just to show the board that the COVID is rising in our area and until COVID does six, you know, die off, and the governor lessens his restrictions, we're literally bringing back kids to capacity. So. I know the entire community, myself, the district, the teachers, the admin, all want our kids back five days a week. But right now, this is literally the, the best we can do, which, not trying to cop out on the board, but, you know, as long as the governor has what the governor has, this is what we have. So. We're, we're working on it, Miss Lockwood.
And once again, I just want to point out, it's not spreading within the school. The cases we've had have been contained, and it's not spreading through kids being in school. So that's, that's awesome.
We've done an awesome job in school. I'll give a quick shout out to Vicky Perkins, who is our liaison of Boomer County Health Department. She contacts us on weekends, nights, whenever the three building administrators have been on an awesome job contacting over infected. I know I've got two board members who had family members infected, or not infected, but, but exposed and had to get a hold of them. So that the tracing, when someone comes down with COVID, and a little bit off topic, but I think it's important for, for to know in the public, is a prime, an eight to twelve hour job for whatever administrator building it is. And then Mr. McDermott comes in on the bus tracing as well. So when you get a case, it, it's an all-day job. And if it's a Sunday, it's an all-day Sunday. So again, I, I agree, we're containing it the best we can, but it's definitely a whole different aspect of work.
Okay. And then somebody wants to talk about NISBA general meeting?
Yeah, that was Mr. Fabra.
Yeah, that was me. First year as voting delegate, so I just wanted to share. My Halloween morning was waking up early to attend my virtual general meeting of NISBA. But, um, now they had some proposals. And again, these are just proposals, what they want to take to the state legislature. But there was a few I just wanted to share. One was a complete overhaul of the testing system in, for education, which I thought was interesting. Um, they said that the, the testing system now is very antiquated and needs a major overhaul. Um, one of the big complaints they said was school personnel not be able to access the tests, see answer keys, to see how their kids did. They just get a, you know, a very vague data sheet that they get, that the district gets there and shared. So, you know, this is one of the proposals they want to recommend to the state education department to completely overhaul the testing system. They also talked about mid-year cuts, and now they're gonna strongly oppose, you know, take it to the state legislature, strongly oppose having any mid-year state cuts. And another one that was kind of interesting was, um, they want to every three years now, do a recertification for mandated reporters for, you know, child abuse and that. Um, I know I was, you know, in college when I took that course, and I haven't done anything since then. Um, that's the way the system is now. So they're talking about maybe every three years now, all mandated reporters doing kind of a recertification in that area. Uh, just to, you know, make sure we, we stay on top of things and so on. So those were just three proposals I just wanted to share from that. And, you know, we'll see what comes from it, if anything.
The mandated reporters is interesting, Mike, because you're right. It's my tour fourth year in education, so I took mine twenty five years ago.
Yeah, exactly. It was a long time ago. I did mine.
Yeah, definitely.
That's good information. Thank you, Mike. Is there any questions for Mike?
Be doing it next year, Mike?
I don't know, maybe Lynn can do it next year.
You're muted.
I was gonna say that we talked about some of that stuff at the legislative meeting, so I'm on the legislative committee. So it kind of would make sense to have whoever's on legislative committee also be the delegate to vote. So we'll have to remember that when we go to, well, Mike, you could be on the legislative committee.
We'll, we'll, we'll just put a little check on the reorg and discuss in July.
Yeah, just, just to keep that in mind when we do discuss it, that that should probably be the same person.
Yeah, good point. Okay, uh, four point one through four point six. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve the personnel change, I'm, I'm sorry, excuse me, a motion to approve four point one through four point six. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Mike. I have a second. Thank you, Sparrows. Discussion. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Hi.
Lynn Lockwood.
Hi.
Sparrows Tomatoes.
Hi.
Mike Fabra.
Hi.
And Mary Collins.
Hi.
Motion passed. Five point one. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve the updated information and chaperones for the Schenango Forks Costa Rica trip, previously approved trip as attached. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Sparrows. Thank you, Mary. Discussion. Now, and you may have noticed, my husband's a name as a chaperone, but we, we don't have any financial gain by chaperoning, so I am going to participate in this vote. He is simply a chaperone. So in case anyone had any concern about my husband being on this. Um, any further discussion? Hey, roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Hi.
Lynn Lockwood.
Hi.
Sparrows Tomatoes.
Hi.
Mike Fabra. Mary Collins.
Hi.
Motion passed. Five point two. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve the recommendations of the committee on preschool special education. And special education, and be it resolved that the Board of Education confirms the recommended placements as attached. May I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Thank you, Lynn. Thank you, Sparrows. Discussion. And roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Hi.
Lynn Lockwood.
Hi.
Sparrows Tomatoes.
Hi.
Mike Fabra.
Hi.
Mary Collins.
Hi.
Motion passed. Five point three, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve the education program for children with disabilities, provider and or evaluator agreement, and authorize the board president to sign as attached. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Lynn. I have a second. Thank you, Sparrows. Discussion. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Hi.
Lynn Lockwood.
Hi.
Sparrows Tomatoes.
Hi.
Mike Fabra.
Hi.
Mary Collins.
Hi.
Motion passed. Five point four. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to appoint the following as club advisors. May I have a motion, please? Thank you, Sparrows. May I have a second? May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion.
Should we table this, have further discussions and executive?
We certainly can. Yep. Um, okay, a motion to table.
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, uh, roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Hi.
Lynn Lockwood.
Hi.
Sparrows Tomatoes.
Hi.
Mike Fabra.
Hi.
And Mary Collins.
Hi.
Okay, motion to table passed. Five point five. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve the request for revision of financial information as attached, and authorize the board president and superintendent to sign. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Sparrows. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lynn. Discussion. Okay, roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Hi.
Lynn Lockwood.
Hi.
Sparrows Tomatoes.
Hi.
Mike Fabra.
Hi.
And Mary Collins.
Hi.
Motion passed. Five point six. Upon approval of the superintendent, a motion to dispose of the attached items that have little or no market value due to damage and or obsolescence, and therefore declared surplus as attached. Tractor, old serving line, and lathe. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Mary. In a second.
Second.
Thank you, Lynn. Discussion. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Hi.
Lynn Lockwood.
Hi.
Sparrows Tomatoes.
Hi.
Mike Fabra.
Hi.
Mary Collins.
Hi.
Motion passed. All right, six point one and six point two, FYI. Hey, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve six point three through six point seven. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Um, we need to discuss, uh, the electric contract, six point five. Which one we're going with?
Yeah, six point five. If you have any questions, you can ask Mr. McDermott. I believe he sent it to the board yesterday via email.
Right.
I thought we were just doing six point three.
What, did you just say, I thought it was six point one through six point five. I'm sorry.
Six, three, three, six, seven.
I said, oh, yeah. I'm sorry, yeah, three, seven. Amy, you're muted.
That explains why nobody's responding to me. Okay, I'm sorry, six point three to six point seven. Yes, that's what we're doing. Yep.
So six point five is the electric contract. We normally, when we've done this before, we have to pick who and how long.
Bernie, are you on with us?
If, if he's not, I mean, we've done this before. I mean, basically, he's got pretty reputable, you know, Constellation through BOS, he's Empire, which we've done business with before. And I think Direct Energy, we've done business with before. They're all big, good companies. Do we just go with the cheaper one, I assume?
Do I say that? Empire Natural Gas there, two, two years?
Well, no, you, you want to go with Direct Energy. If you look, the kilowatt price per hour, the, the
Oh, yeah.
The twelve, the twelve month is thirty point three one, the two year is point three five. I mean, do we lock it in? Electric's cheap right now. Will it stay cheap? It's cheap right now because there's kind of a glut of electricity because of COVID, because, you know, factories aren't producing as much, et cetera. So do you take the gamble and say that it's gonna go up next year? So let's hedge our bets, pay a little bit more and get locking in longer? I mean, these rates are actually much lower than what they were just a couple of years ago. Well, actually, yeah, if you look at it, the last thing we paid was point four nine. So, yeah, I mean, that's a considerable savings. Wait, oh, four nine, sorry.
Well, on this item, that other attachment is for Empire Natural Gas contract. There's not a contract there for the other.
Oh, Empire's the most, according to this, Empire's the most expensive one.
I think Bernie's recommending, uh, Empire only because the, uh, he thinks it's, uh, on the two-year, actually on the, on what the, uh, pass-through cost, that, uh, it ends up being more.
Oh, I see. Okay. All right, I see this. I, I didn't see that on the, so they're not doing a pass-through for Empire, which they are on the other ones.
Well, the other, on Direct Energy, the pass-through is built into it.
Gotcha.
Built into the price.
I, I'm not, I guess I'm not seeing what you all are seeing, because I see Direct Energy two-year eighty-five, four seventy-one, and Empire at two-year at ninety-one, three ninety-eight.
No, there's a new, there's a new, uh, sheet. Did he, did he send you a new sheet? There was a new one that came out today.
There is.
Is that the old one?
Yeah. Direct Energy for two years was one oh one estimate, while Empire was only ninety-one.
Ninety-one, yeah. And I think we do business with Empire now, like.
Yeah, Empire, Empire supplies a natural gas now.
Yeah.
And, and Mark, you're saying that the price for Empire includes the R P S and the S E C pass-through, and the other two are gonna, there's gonna be an additional charge with those other two.
Correct.
Yeah, that's kind of weird, the way they price that. I mean, usually, it's apples to apples.
I, I don't have one today, so, um, the last one I have is from Tuesday. I didn't get anything today.
It's on the agenda. If you go to the agenda.
It's on board docs, Amy.
Here's the thing, I mean, Empire's clearly the one to go with. I think the biggest thing we have to decide, do we want to only lock it in for a year? Or do we lock it in for two, pay a little bit more and lock it in for two years?
In two years, only spending a thousand more, I think, I would probably, I would recommend two years. Just pay just a little bit more for two. I don't know.
My opinion, I agree with you, Mike, just because, God forbid, we're in the same position we are with the economy in a year.
Right.
The economy picks up, the electric's going up. That's just the way it works.
Right.
So, Mark, do you have any input on that?
What's that?
Do you have anything input on that? Two-year versus one-year?
Uh, one-year, two-year, I, I mean, two-year, I mean, nothing goes down. It, it's gonna go up. I mean, you're, so you're only talking about a thousand dollar increase. Uh, on, on ninety thousand dollars, I don't see any issue with going for two years.
Okay.
I mean, if you look at it, Lynn, right now, we were paying point oh four nine. So it's actually gone down, and the only reason it's gone down is because you, you know, production and, you know, there's less demand right now because of COVID.
Okay.
Right, the, the, I mean, the electricity usage is way down. And if, if you look at it, and especially down in New York City. You know, the office buildings aren't being used. So like, the usage is way down. That's, that's why the prices you see is, is down.
Well, if we can lock it in, then for the budget next year, it'll be much, oops, it would be much easier. We know exactly what the numbers are.
Any other discussion? Okay. Roll call. We're, again, we're doing six point three to six point seven. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Hi.
Lynn Lockwood.
Hi.
Sparrows Tomatoes.
Hi.
Fabra.
Hi.
And Mary Collins.
Hi.
And now I have to let you know, there are two forms that I think we had gone over before, when we went over the agenda. I didn't have them attached to this meeting. Uh, Mark just brought it to my attention. I just put them on at the end of financials, so it would be six point eleven and six point twelve. Um, if you want to take a look at that, I also emailed it to you. Obviously, if you need to take some time and look over it, it can wait till the end. But I think he needed them to be approved at this meeting.
This is the dental for retirees, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Isn't it? I'm sorry, Mark.
Yeah, it's just, uh, the guardian contract for the retirees' dental. It takes effect January first.
Joe, this is what Chris.
No, you, you got a bad echo there, Sparrows. What was that?
I said, this is what Chris informed us last month about, all, all the details of.
Hundred percent, yeah. It, it's, it's because we had to change. It wasn't, the district wanted to change. Our previous carrier basically dropped us, and we had to switch. So this, I think Mark's just asking for it to be approved tonight, so we can get the ball rolling, because it does switch over. Very extensively in the executive session with the board last meeting. Board meeting. And this is Brown and Brown again.
Now, Brown and Brown met to talk with retirees, and you said there weren't too many on. Is there any, any, um, thing being sent to the retirees regarding this? Have you already sent it out, or?
I believe Brown and Brown did, and we put it on our webpage as well, Mary. And I also asked Chris Wilkinson to reach out and speak to Vicky Quallor, who is the head of the retirees. So with, with all those avenues, we got, we have it covered.
Okay.
This is very different than the retiree health insurance.
Yes, it is.
Very different.
And this has been to legal?
It's been through legal, correct, Erin?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
We, we, Amy would not bring you anything that's not been through legal.
Okay. Okay.
I I'm comfortable with it. I know we usually like to read things through more thoroughly, but since Chris went over it with us in detail last meeting.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Okay, so that's going to be a 6.11. So let's hang on a moment. Let's get through where we're at. So we're discussing the item that we're on. So we just approved up through 6.7. We're gonna just go in order, keeping it clean. 6.8. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve a donation in the amount of $813 from the Shenango Forks football boosters to be used for the Christmas basket fund. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Sparrows. Mary, I think I heard you back there. Thank you. Discussion. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Aye.
Lynn Lockwood. I'm sorry, did you say?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Sparrow's tomatoes.
Aye.
Mike Fabra.
Aye.
And Mary Collins.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you very much. Football boosters. Thank you. 6.9. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve a donation in the amount of $1,250 from Smith Site Development LLC to be used for the Christmas basket fund. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Lynn. Mike, I'll take you as a second. Discussion. And roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Aye.
Lynn Lockwood.
Aye.
Sparrow's tomatoes.
Aye.
Mike Fabra.
Aye.
And Mary Collins.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you, Smith Site Development, for your donation. 6.10. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve a donation in the amount of $250 from KST Security Consultants LLC to be used for the Christmas basket fund. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Sparrows. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Aye.
Lynn Lockwood.
Aye.
Sparrow's tomatoes.
Aye.
Mike Fabra.
Aye.
Mary Collins.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you, KST, for your donation. Okay, we are gonna do 6.11. Just need a moment. Okay, 6.11. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve the Guardian direct billing agreement as attached. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Sparrows. May I have a second?
Second.
Excellent. Discussion. And roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Aye.
Lynn Lockwood.
Aye.
Sparrow's tomatoes.
Aye.
Mike Fabra.
Aye.
And Mary Collins.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay. See. 7.1. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve the changes to the policies based on the recommendations of the Shenango Forks Policy Committee and Council as attached.
Amy.
Yes.
6.12 is the Guardian service agreement. There's two different things to approve.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm online and I only see six. Let's see, refresh it. I only see the one.
Sorry.
No, you're okay. Need to refresh it. There it is. Okay. 6.12. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve the Guardian service agreement as attached. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Sparrows. May I have a second? Thank you, Mike. And discussion? Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Aye.
Lynn Lockwood.
Aye.
Sparrow's tomatoes.
Aye.
Mike Fabra.
Aye.
And Mary Collins.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you, Erin, for catching that. 7.1. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve the changes to the policies based on the recommendations of the Shenango Forks Policy Committee and Council as attached. May I have a motion, please?
Second.
Mary's, Mary's first and I'm second.
Okay. Discussion. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Aye.
Lynn Lockwood.
Aye.
Sparrow's tomatoes.
Aye.
Mike Fabra.
Aye.
And Mary Collins.
Aye.
Motion passed. 8.1. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve the BOE minutes from the regular board meeting of October 8th, 2020, the emergency Board of Education meeting of October 12th, 2020, and the special board meeting of October 29th, 2020 as attached. May I have a motion, please?
And November 5th.
Did that get added on?
No, that should have been earlier.
Okay. All right, and November 5th, 2020 as attached. Who's my motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Sparrows. Thank you, Mike. Discussion. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Aye.
Lynn Lockwood. Sparrow's tomatoes.
Aye.
Mike Fabra.
Aye.
And Mary Collins.
Aye.
Motion passed. So you will attach a November 5th one, correct?
Yes, it should be on there.
It is there.
It is now? Okay. All right. And 9.1. A motion, a motion for consideration of executive session to discuss collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law and the medical financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. Discussions involving proposed pending or current litigation and contract negotiations. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Sparrows, thank you, Lynn. Discussion. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Aye.
Lynn Lockwood.
Aye.
Sparrow's tomatoes.
Aye.
Mike Fabra.
Aye.
Mary Collins.
Aye.
Motion passed. We will be coming back out to take action. And for those who don't stay around, have a good night.
Joe, did you send us a link for executive? Because I don't see it.
Sorry, I'm here.
You're good. Still waiting on Amy.
There she is.
Okay. All right, 5.4. Extracurricular clubs. All right, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve Kathy Knapp at $618. This is to correct the omission from the last meeting. So it would be $618 to fund the middle school yearbook assistant advisor.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Aye.
Lynn Lockwood.
Aye.
Sparrow's tomatoes.
Aye.
Mike Fabra.
Aye.
And Mary Collins.
Aye.
Motion passed. The BOE, BOE is very supportive of clubs and activities. However, at this time, we are not in a position to grant any additional stipends. If the circumstances surrounding COVID-19 should change, we are not opposed to revisiting. Okay, a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Second.
And discussion. And roll.
Amy O'Brien.
Aye.
Lynn Lockwood.
Aye.
Sparrow's tomatoes.
Aye.
Mike Fabra.
Aye.
And Mary Collins.
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone.